Today is February 2nd and the time is 3:04 PM. Is there an approval of the agenda?
So move.
Motion on the floor, Mr. Pugh. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any vote? At this time will be led in the invocation of other leases by Mr. Aries.
Let us pray. Heavenly most gracious Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the snow that we've received over the last several days and the beauty that we see in your creation. Father, be with our country today as it seems to most of us to be so divided. We ask that you put a hand of healing on that. We know, as I just said, one nation under God. And for that to take place, we must come together as a true nation. Father, be with our men and women of the military as they stand in harm's way on foreign lands as well as here at home to guarantee those privileges that we so enjoy every day. Be with the men and women of our local fire, rescue, EMS, law enforcement, and all of those that so serve so that we may have the way of life that we so enjoy each and every day. Be with us as we move forward with the business of the county. Give us strength, the courage, and the wisdom to make decisions that are pleasing to you and beneficial to our community. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for talking. Sorry for the delay. Thank you, sir. That's why we speak for you on the desk. You did a good job there.
At this time, we're going to open up citizen comments. Anyone here wishing to speak? Seeing and hearing now, we will close citizen comments. And we want to the ordinance first read. Fran Brown? Keep coming up.
Uh, no.
Can you give us an overview? Okay, so we are asking, do you let go of board? And Mr. Register, voter registration. Will you verify your microphone going in the green?
Stay close to it Fran, so the people on YouTube can't hear you.
Can you hear me?
Oh, yeah.
Um, I'm Fran Brown. I'm from voter registration office. And I'm here with my electoral board member, Teresa Ammon. We, the electoral board is requesting to move a precinct, the Pleasant View Precinct, from the former Pleasant View Elementary School to a new precinct, which is the New Prospect Baptist Church in Pleasant, in the Monroe area. The reason for that is it's more cost effective to do so. And that's our request. Thank you, Ms. Brown. Thank you. Any questions?
Ms. Brown, is the church ADA accessible?
Yes. Any other question for? There are motions?
I move that the Board directs to schedule a public hearing at the February 16th, Board meeting at 7:00 PM.
There is a motion on the floor, Mr. Pugh. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any vote? Thank you. Moving on to the consent agenda. Any questions?
Madam Chair, I make the motion that we approve the consent agenda.
There is a motion on the floor, Mr. Tucker. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any vote? Motion carries. And at this time, we're going into special presentation. Ms. Sarah Lou Christian, you want to come forward?
Ma'am, I think you need to hold your phone.
Oh, oh, all right. You, you need to get the summary.
Supervisors, in your package, you have a draft commemorative resolution for Sarah Lou Christian, who has served on the Amherst County staff for over 32 years as the Director of the Department of Parks and Recreation, Recreation and Parks. And this resolution, I'm sorry to say, we had to limit it to just two pages because we couldn't fit all of our accomplishments on only two pages. And then two pages, because that's all we could fit inside a frame. But we went on and on for many pages for all of the things that Ms. Christian has accomplished for the county. And you have that draft resolution in front of you. I requested you adopt that resolution and present it to her as an expression of thanks of the people of Amherst County for her devoted service for so long.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. More than any discussion?
Madam Chair, I move that the Board adopts a commemorative resolution,
There is a motion on the floor, Mr. Martin. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any votes? Sarah Lou, anything that could be any problem, that's why I was going to invite you up first. Thank you, ma'am. I guess I want you to stay closer to the microphone. But Sarah Lou, there are so many accomplishments on here. And I'll have Dean read this if you will. But thank you for 32 years here in the county, for all of your impact on the lives of Amherst County and the things that you've done in parks and recreations that you've created. And help type you. Thank you for that.
Begin?
Sure.
Okay, hang on. Be it resolved by the Board of Supervisors of the County of Amherst, Virginia. The Board of Supervisors of the County of Amherst, Virginia hereby expresses its profound thanks to Sarah Lou Christian for her exceptional service to Amherst County as follows. Whereas Sarah Lou Christian served as Amherst County's Director of Recreation and Parks from June 1988 through January 2021, bringing to the position her enthusiasm, passion, and team spirit in providing outstanding knowledge and programs to the Amherst County citizen. And whereas, as the county's Director of Recreation and Parks for over 32 years, Ms. Christian initiated numerous activities and programs to build the county's capacity for delivering recreational services to include night fishing permits, stargazing permits, theme park discount ticket program, fishing clinics, annual trails day, May National Family Month for Amherst County, June National Recreation and Parks Month for Amherst County, Biannual Things to Do tabloid, Amherst Outdoors, nature camps, socials for seniors, pickleball, aerobics for seniors, yoga, art classes, craft classes, line dancing, square dancing, and ground dancing, dog obedience training classes, summer playground program, summer art camps, annual Easter egg extravaganza, annual fall festival and candy hunt, annual spooktacular, annual turkey chop, gingerbread house decoration contest, Santa Claus calling program, 60 Days Around the County, bus trips, Lew Stone Theater concerts, annual outdoor expo, Coolwell Amphitheater Plays and Movies, annual fishing clinic, Eagle Scout projects, Love Sign project, and Jam It on the James concert. And whereas Ms. Christian successfully worked with and contributed to the Madison Heights Youth Baseball, Amherst County Dixie League Baseball, and Amherst County Girls Dixie Baseball Organizations to build their respective complexes. And whereas Ms. Christian worked closely with national, state, and local organizations such as the Department of Conservation and Recreation, the Department of Game and Inland Fisheries, National Recreation and Park Association, Virginia Recreation and Park Association, May National Family Month, June National Trails Month, July National Parks and Recreation Month, as well as the Recreation and Parks Departments from Lynchburg, Nelson, Bedford, Campbell, and Appomattox Counties, and established quarterly meetings with rural Parks and Recreation Directors. And whereas Ms. Christian has served on the VRPS, that's Virginia Recreation and Parks, I think, Society, Leadership Training Institute Board, and the Central Virginia Blueways and Greenways Committee, and also as Clerk of the Amherst County Park Recreation Cultural Development Board. And whereas she was pivotal in implementing the Virginia Birding and Wildlife Designations for the county. And whereas in her 32-plus years with Amherst County, Ms. Christian was involved in numerous projects such as Jamestown 2007 Commemoration, Amherst County Sesquicentennial Celebration, Amherst Live, Piney River Triathlon, Amherst County Fair, park development and installation of restrooms at Mill Creek Lake Park, Thrasher's Lake Park, public swimming at Mill Creek Lake, tennis courts refurbishments, designing and establishing Amherst County Welcome Signs, and the County Historical Society's Annual Bateau Day. And whereas Ms. Christian played an instrumental leadership role in building partnerships with the Amherst County Public Schools, Amherst County Youth Services, Amherst County Sheriff's Office, Amherst County Historical Society, Public Library, Public Safety Service Authority, Community Development, Public Works, Chamber of Commerce, Amherst County Smart Start, YMCA, 4-H Extension Agency, James River Adventures, Amherst County's Art Society, Girl Scout Troops, Sweetbrier College, Town of Amherst, McDonald's, Lynchburg College, Central Virginia Community College, Central Virginia Training Center, Central Virginia Planning District Commission, Virginia Blue Ridge Trail Foundation, Appalachian Trail Association, the County Youth Theater, Virginia Department of Transportation, Girls on the Run, Special Olympics, Central Virginia Creative Arts, Virginia Select Auto, Madison Heights Ritter Club, Monroe First Baptist Church, Ascension Episcopal Church, Northminster Presbyterian Church, Scott Zion Church, Old Dominion Job Corps, Amherst County Habitat for Humanity, Amherst County Humane Society, WAMV Radio Station, Virginia Tourism Commission, Robert E. Lee Conservation District, James River Association, Second Stage, Agar, Mountain Viking Club, and Rock Climbing Club, assuring that our community was brought together by enriching activities for all citizens, in turn, creating an atmosphere of health and wellness for Amherst County. And whereas she has proven to be a highly successful community leader during her tenure, allowing the county to expand its parks projects as well as setting up and managing the county's outdoor festival policy improvements. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors of the County of Amherst, Virginia hereby recognizes Sarah Lou Christian as a dedicated public servant, resident, and a true friend of Amherst County, and gratefully commands her for the exceptional service and heartfelt commitment she has demonstrated to Amherst County. It further resolved that the Board wishes Ms. Christian all the best in the next chapter of her professional career, confident that she will continue to be a force for good in the world and the betterment of Amherst County, and thanks her in advance for all her good works yet to come. Adopted this second day of February 2021, Jennifer Arum, Chair.
First of all little words, I'm not appearing to anything other than thank you so very much. I'm not going anywhere. I'm still here. I'm going to continue to contribute. Thank you so very much for this. And it's been, it's been a pleasure and a blessing and a joy to serve Amherst County, to serve with dedicated individuals and staff like every, like, like I have for the past 33 years. It's, it's, it was a tough decision and still kind of scary and still kind of not real yet. But, but I'm, I'm still here. Call me anytime. And, and you have not seen the last of me. So thank you. Thank you.
This is both a sad and happy day for all of us. I've known Sarah Lou for a long time. And just a very energetic person, as you can tell by that resolution. But my one memory of you, Sarah Lou, is we had the county ladder truck set up at Amherst County High School. And I had jokingly said to you, you want to climb it? And I turned my head and you were halfway to the top. And I remember those little tennis shoes going up the ladder. That kind of summed you up.
Anybody else?
I'd like to say that it's been a pleasure to work with her for the last 13 years. So Sarah Lou, thank you. It's been great.
I'd like to say the same thing. I haven't been there in five years and she's, she's the best.
What can you say bad about her when she can hear you? It would be a very short story. Good pleasure, Sarah.
Thank you, Ms. Christian. At this time, we will move on to Second Stage. Ms. Monk?
Thank you so much, ma'am. For those of you in the audience, there are copies of this report on the front table. If anyone wants to pick any up. I'm going to refer to it, but blessedly not read it. So if you would like to have your own copy. And I bring our rent to Mr. Rogers. Always a pleasure to do that. You ever wake up with an idea of how to present an important message by hanging in on a shared reference? My idea this morning was baseball. I don't play baseball, so I ask your indulgence. This year at Second Stage might be characterized as a strikeout in terms of programming and a home run for the farm and artisan market and capital improvements. As so many others, we had to abandon our entire annual programming schedule, including a fundraiser to raise working capital for younger, smaller businesses and nonprofits who needed help to launch projects to enhance the county. We canceled our summer theater camp for middle school students, all our lectures and concerts. We postponed the movies in the main hall and even had to put our drive-in movie series on hold. I really can't figure that out. When people are in their own cars with the windows rolled up, distance by parking lot sizes, we still couldn't do it. But we'll do it later. One pitch worked. Together with Agar, we were able to offer five outdoor concerts in the summer and fall and enjoy the distanced audience of about 40 for each of those events. Virtual programming seems to be the only path right now. Again, in partnership with Agar, we moved to indoor concerts with musicians playing to an empty hall but streaming the music online. This week, we'll host the fourth in a series of free virtual art classes for children age 5 to 9 led by the magical art teacher at Amherst Middle School, Jennifer Fitzgerald. We were talking home run when we registered 47 children in that program. And starting this Sunday at 7:30, we'll launch another free program called Read to Me, which is a 30-minute reading of works by Black authors in honor of Black History Month. That will be read by some of our local favorite people. I think Fran Brown has left, but Dr. Derek Brown is going to be one of our readers. The idea is that you settle into your favorite armchair with your preferred beverage and you read to it. Ooh, that cozy feeling. Sometimes your mom had her arm around you, but this time we can't provide that. But anyway. News of these events will be posted on our website, Facebook, and weekly emails. We hope to continue these series with other things such as cooking demonstrations and adult art classes and exercise. Earlier this winter, we did a survey of our mailing list to gain guidance from them about new programming. The first thing on the list was music lessons. So we're on it. We're going to find some. We actually have a volunteer to teach ukulele, if anybody's just dying to do that. In the home run category, the market is now open online year-round, offering locally-produced food, food products, and handmade items. Customers prepay for their weekly orders before Tuesday at 8:00 PM and drive by for pickup on Thursday afternoons. With incredibly generous funding from Centra Foundation, our second helping program of deliveries to food insecure neighbors continues year-round as well. We hope to reopen the market in person in May. After grant requests to the Morgan Foundation in Richmond were denied three times, we're happy to report that they finally funded a new closed cell spray foam roof system on the 1925 to 1950 flat buildings along with soffit and gutter replacements. The new roofs are doing their job and were installed at a much lower price than, than other options. That led way to repair and repaint of all the wooden windows, including the historic sanctuary, stained glass, and full interior painting funded by the Easkey Foundation. Came through Second Stage on my way and the painters are at work. The lights were on in the old sanctuary. And that beautiful plaster work and woodwork is shining. It's just, you must, you just need to go look at it. It's just perfect. We're ready to break ground on the patio project from outside of the coffee shop door funded by the Greater Lynchburg Community Foundation. Not counting the small stuff, we spent nearly $50,000 on the building this year. We didn't really. We were awarded money to spend on, which is the trick we have to play. I'm happy to report that the repurposing of the Fellowship Hall as a daycare center for infants and toddlers of low-income families is on schedule. We are now completing the Sudleys with Humankind, which is the old Lynchburg Presbyterian Home and Family Services Program. We hope to start renovations this month and open in early summer. The construction costs will be covered by Humankind. And thanks to Dean's eagle eye, we added an indemnity clause to the lease to protect your building against any lease created by the work. The lease is now under review by our attorney. I'm happy to report that our tenant roster remains constant. We've helped some of them with renovate and cares and PPP grant access. We're starting to see groups in the main hall for small meetings. Before use, they agreed to comply with all current COVID guidelines. One last bad baseball reference. I'm really sorry. We're in the seventh inning stretch, taking a breath while gathering purpose and energy for the next years. In March, we will begin review of our 2018 through 22 strategic plan with the goal of positioning Second Stage for the future. The organization has matured. The mission is the same, to focus every effort toward making Amherst an even better place to live and work. On behalf of the Board, our tenants, our volunteers, our staff, and our audience, we thank you. Thank you for your trust and for your generosity.
Questions? Ms. Monk? Ms. Tucker?
This isn't a thank, this isn't a question, but it is a thank you. Thank you for your, to you and your Board for your enthusiasm, your unending support, your, your energy and your ability to just communicate far and wide what was going on over there. Thank you for your skill at grant, at getting good grants. Oh, my gosh, that's awesome. As the longest-serving member of this Board, I remember when that could have been an empty parking lot. And thank you, Mr. Rogers. Thank you, Mr. Prophet. Thank you to all the staff that saw the vision and worked with them. This is absolutely truly a community effort and from the bottom of our heart. Thank you.
We're having fun every day. Or any other?
Well, yeah, I echo what Ms. Tucker said. I remember giving you the key many years ago. I don't know how many, how many years has it been now?
It was May 13th, 2015.
That time's like...
That's our birthday.
Oh, yeah. So, you know, I remember that, being there. And I'm just so grateful, you know, that building, like Ms. Tucker said, was getting ready to face demolition. But we didn't have to do it. So it saved the county a lot of money and now we have something. Hopefully, when things get back to normal, when they get back to normal, we'll see even more progress that's being made. But we certainly do appreciate what you've done. It's been an owner's task, but we did a great job. And the people that have been associated with us well, so we send our thank you.
He takes the crown. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Senator. Appreciate it.
I have one more thank you. Completely left out, Mr. Lockaby. Thank you to your fabulous legal work that also made all of this possible.
Thank you, ma'am.
Ms. Monk, thank you for all your work. Thank you. All right, this time we're moving to old business. Resolution 2021 back to year, year, year of two?
Yes, Madam Chair. Board members, before you, you have a draft resolution opposing the imposition of boat landing access fees. The resolution was proposed by Friends of the Rivers of Virginia, Mr. Bill Tanger, who is here to address your questions. This regards to, this is regard to an access fee that beginning January 1st of this year, any person using a Department of Wildlife Resources, used to be DGIF, owned or managed facility, including boating access sites, must have a valid Virginia hunting, trapping, or fishing permit, a Restore the Wild membership, an access permit, or current certificate of boat registration issued by DWR to use the facility. This does not apply to persons under the age of 17 or passengers in a boat. The operator must have a permit. The permit, if you don't have any of those other licenses, costs $4 a day. You can get an annual permit for $23. The permit is acquired online and DWR will post signs at our county lakes where we have DWR boat docks and boat ramps for people to pay that fee online. Fee is enforced by, can be enforced by our sheriff's deputies, but for the most part by DWR employees, DGIF enforcement officers. So the question before you is, do you want to adopt this resolution to express your opposition to a law that has already been passed? And furthermore, you have the option also, if you do not want to have these fees imposed at our lakes, we can withdraw from our agreement with DWR that they do the annual maintenance on our docks and our ramps. From discussions with DWR, they have calculated that the amount they expend each year is, is less than $2,000 for all of our docks and ramps. And most of that is the cost of hiring a contractor to come out and inspect them. And over the last few years, all they've had to do is replace a few of the decking boards on some of the docks. There's been no major work for about 10 years. So, so if you, if you want to maintain the status quo, do nothing. If you want to oppose this fee, we can adopt the resolution and we can inform DWR that we don't want the fees imposed at our lakes and therefore we want to withdraw from the agreement so that the law does not apply to our lakes as it currently does. You should know that only people who use the dock and the ramp will be charged the fee. So if you're a kayaker or a canoeer, you just put your boat or your kayak in from the grass and don't use the dock or ramp, there's no fee to be charged. You're paid. Sounds like an enforcement nightmare for those that need to enforce that, who else? Who on the lake needs to pay and who not? But that's not of our concern. I need the Board's direction on how you want to proceed. I need the board's direction on how you want to proceed.
Ms. Tucker?
Ms. Rogers, I've got two questions. If there were...
Oh, and, and board members, just to let you know, I have Pete Shula from DWR standing by to go on speakerphone if you have any questions directly from DWR.
This might be from Ms. Lockaby. If, if there was damage caused to one of our docks that I used, it was an accident, whatever, would our insurance pay for that?
It would.
Okay. Question two. If we decide that we want to withdraw from this relationship, could we, in a couple of years, rejoin the relationship?
I did not ask that question. We can certainly ask that question. You know, one of the reasons they are imposing this is to raise more revenue so that they can cover expenses like this. I'm not sure that they would be willing to go back into it. And they just might withdraw from it anyway because it is, it has long expired. We're just on an annual renewal basis. I don't know the answer to that, but we can ask Mr. Shula if you'd like.
My last, my last comment is just a statement. The idea that we're charging our citizens a fee to use something that we encourage them to use, which is our recreation facilities, just doesn't sit right with me personally. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
I have a couple of questions. Now, there, there, up at Snowden, there is a Virginia department, I guess it's the DWR now. That is, we have nothing to do with that. That is not ours. That is the state's, right?
Correct. I don't know who owns it. I know that we do not.
I'm pretty sure the state owns it and operates it.
Do I have a grab mic?
And so that wouldn't, that wouldn't have any effect regarding...
Not our lakes.
Yeah.
But people who use it, yes. Talk about the one at the end of the footbridge?
Yeah, the one up in Snowden. Yes, sir.
Yeah. That's actually owned by Forest Service. And they have a working arrangement with the athletic trail conference. The parking lot has been a nervous for the athletic trail conference. And what happened was, a lot of voters in an eight-up old apartment, not all of our places, that certainly became an overuse of that. So it's something like that.
The farmer forested.
No.
I mean, federal government.
Forest Service.
All right. You know, when I look at this, I would like, I do like the agreement because the agreement, we don't have to pay for upgrades or repairs when they, when they need to happen, and someone else does that. Although, you say $2,000 a year, but if the dock rots out, it's, it's going to be a lot of money to replace the dock. I do know that this has been exist, how long has this been in existence for? The law?
Oh, the new thing just went into effect January 1st.
Yeah, but they, they had a, previously, if you were using some of these places, they usually had a donation box, or it said you, you had to pay to use the, the facility.
I'm sorry, yeah, there's some places they have donation boxes. On the river access, not so much, but on the lakes and wildlife management areas, that's what I'm...
Yeah, I mean, by the line of, they're going to have, have to have a lot of people to enforce this, you know, officers to enforce this, if they're really serious about it. A lot of people, if you're a fisherman, you're really not going to be, if you have your license, then you're exempt from it. I don't know how I feel about it. And I can see the, the advantages of not having to refurbish the boat docks or the ramps and all the concrete work because that would fall back on the state, which would save us money in the long term. But as Ms. Claudia said, you know, it would affect us regarding people who want to use the, the facilities, if there's a fee to use it.
Yeah, I agree. I'm somewhat torn, but I'm, I'm more leaning towards opposing fees. I think it, it's just, you know, you're basically putting a fee on kayakers, canoeists, tubers that use these facilities. And I think as our county minister pointed out, it's probably more just a way to raise funding for these things. So the agreement is nice, especially if something was to happen to the ramp. We do, you know, I, I think one of the big draws to our county are our recreational facilities, I guess we could always put up our own sign telling kayakers and canoeists to maybe use the sandy beach area a lot.
Well, that would, that would be bad because the sandy beach is the only area that's off limits to owners.
Well, I understand.
It's a grassy area beside the river.
Yeah. Well, can, can we oppose this, but yet keep the agreement? I mean, what, there's a say if you, I mean, there's nothing to say we can't keep the agreement, right? We, we could, we could oppose it and keep the agreement, right?
Yes, sir. That is a possibility. I would think that we would want to ask Mr. Shula about that because he has expressed the view that if we want to oppose this, then they're just happy to back out of the
Can I comment? Let me say that there are a number of entities in the same, in the same boat. For example, downtown McCann has a big access area, half of which is, or a small part of which is owned by, it's owned by the town and managed by, managed by DWR. And they, they are thinking of breaking their agreement with DWR, managing it themselves. But they're really two, as far as I know, two separate actions. There's opposition to the fees and then the individual projects. So I don't think they have to be connected.
No, they don't. But will they connect them? I don't know.
Well, yeah, I, I think it'd be better, I'll just start to ask them if we oppose it, we oppose it, and then go from there. They're really opposing this, it's not, probably not doing anything because they've already passed the law. To me, the decision as well to stay in the agreement and pull out of the agreement, right? And, you know, I asked you the question, Mr. Rogers, with the boat ramp at River Edge, if they can't, if the town is correct.
Yes.
Okay. And that's where we go. So if they come out on that boat ramp, the same thing about us, they do not have to pay for it.
Yes, sir.
So if they go to, if, if I was to take a kayak to the county lakes and put in on that boat ramp because we have this agreement, I would have to pay $4 a day or $29 a day if it was.
Yes, sir.
To me, I'd rather just, you know, I'd rather just take on $2,000 a year and pull out the agreement instead of having them pull, you know, hold the boat on here. Kind of where I'm at.
Mr. Rogers? Sir? I thought that the boat ramp at River Edge Park was run by the Department of Fisheries. We, we had the park, but the actual ramp was from the Department of Wildlife and Recreation
All right, and I'm not certain now. I, I believe that that was all part of funding. I, I know we used beat-up money and, and trails and that sort of thing, but I don't know.
Well, funding's one thing, maintenance is another, and we're talking about maintenance now that is...
That's right.
Correct. So who maintains the dock, the, the ramp, the river?
Hasn't needed any.
I'd say if we, tomorrow, we need to fix things with it.
I had been assuming it's us, but now I'm not certain. Perhaps we can ask Mr. Shula if he had, then there should be an agreement with regard to that ramp also.
The other question I have, let's take the Jamesville State Park right down the road here. Are they going to charge you, so they're going to be charging, you pay a fee again to the state park, and you go down to the boat ramp, are they going to charge you again?
No, that's a DCR property.
Okay.
It's Department of Conservation and Recreation, so they're, they, I mean, it's all new.
Okay, I was just wondering, just taking that as a...
Yeah, they have a lot of services there and people.
But if you put in a bent creek right there, then you would effectively have to pay $4 a day.
Yeah, that's correct, as far as I'm aware. Let me, let me comment. One thing you said, that there was no, for the purpose of the, the opposition thing, there is a purpose to it, and then we have put a bill in called a budget amendment, and it's a very simple, one-sentence budget amendment that says that, that this enactment of this law will not take place for another year, give us time to study on the need, the cost benefits, and impacts. So that's one reason why we are soliciting a resolution of opposition, letting your delegates and senators know how you feel about these fees and this bill.
Madam Chair?
Ms. Tucker?
To me, that's apples and oranges. The idea that you want to oppose something that's already law doesn't make sense to me. I can support your budget amendment. I can support that, but it's useless just to oppose something that's already law, in my, from my perspective.
It also seems to me, I'm not sure if I know, that this is very convoluted. Now, I don't know where I can go put a kayak in or not, if y'all have a name for it, right? Depends on which agencies this means. They've just created some very silly laws that I'm not sure how it's going to be enforced and to put the county in position and to take sides, you know, do we keep this agreement? We're definitely, I definitely don't support county state.
Yeah, it's a very confusing situation when you see a place where you can pull out. Can I pull out there or can I not pull out there? How are you going to know unless, I guess DLR is going to put signage on all of their...
No.
I guess.
I've got a handout here, and I don't know what you know, what you don't know about it, so if you have a copy of it.
They have been supplied, Mr. Tanger, they have.
That's a press release. So, yes, it is confusing, and it's one of the problems. Let me add one other thing, I'm sure you know about it. DWR, this is not a DWR bill. They did not put in House Bill 1604 last year. And they were surprised, as we were surprised, that this guy put it back in. It's the third year in a row, he killed it off two years. He put it back in, and during the pandemic, no one spoke to the bill, no one spoke for it or against it. And it just went through by. Current mentality.
Where was, where did he, what, what area did he represent? Who, who is the...
His name is Fowler. Fowler. And he represents an area, I don't know where it is, somewhere over there. South side, I think, maybe, I'm really not sure. But I would tell you that the reason he put it in, he said, because one of his constituents got upset when he went to a parking lot where there was not enough parking spaces for his boat and trailer. So this guy asked him to do something about it, he put the bill in it. Without further ado, I mean, we commented on the thing in 19, in 2018. We commented that, and DWR basically did not pursue it, but this guy kept putting it in.
Madam Chair, are you at a point where you are entertaining a motion?
Sure.
Madam Chair, I made the vote that we support the rights of Amherst County citizens to access without a fee our lakes and rivers.
There's a motion on the floor by Mrs. Tucker. Is there any discussion on the motion?
I, I have a question, ma'am, with regard to that. I presume then that we will recraft the language of be it resolved to match your motion. Thank you, ma'am.
Motion on the floor by Ms. Tucker. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any of both? Motion carries.
And, and board members?
Unless we have River Edge.
And with that, board members, I intend to let DWR know that we will continue to honor the agreement that we are a party to.
And, Mr. Rogers?
Hey. While we're on the river, 2019, the board passed a resolution supporting the application for grant funds through the RTP, that's the recreational trail program, for the extension of River Edge Park Trail. The county was awarded a grant in the amount of $264,041.76. The total grant, including the match, is $330,052.20, the county match is $66,044.44. This project is for the construction of approximately 500 linear feet, 10 wide-foot, fully accessible trail, including fill and grain of a major ravine. This trail doesn't take us real far, but it gets us by through a major ravine. So the big, big portion of the funds ends up going to filling in and getting across this major ravine. The record in motion is that the board appropriate grant funds in the amount of $264,041.76, and the county match of the $66,044.44 for the construction of Phase 3A of the River Edge Trail Extension Project, and offer as the county administrator some project agreement with the attached addendum. Any questions?
Board, any questions for Ms. Brown? And Ms. Brown?
Thank you.
What do you find, the board?
I move that the board appropriate grant funds in the amount of $264,041.76, I mean, $264,041.76.
$4.00.
Yeah. And the county match $66,010.44 for the construction of Phase 3A of the River Edge Trail Extension Project, and offer as the county administrator some project agreement with the attached addendum.
There's a motion on the floor by Mr. P. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any of both? Motion carries. Moving on to business, talk about the Amalon Commerce Center, Lot 3. Both of them here.
All right, so I thank you today for hearing our request. As you know, the Amalon Commerce Center was started by Amherst County by four supervisors to attract existing businesses into the park that were expanding, our good-looking Amherst County businesses, and also attract business that's from outside the county to come and locate at the Amalon Commerce Center. We have four businesses in there currently, doing a great job. But what we really are finding just nationally is that when businesses want to come move into your park, they want a construction-ready pad. They don't want to worry about DEQ and permitting and all the issues that when you start moving dirt. So pad-ready sites for construction is how you attract businesses. And that's true of our existing businesses or new businesses coming in. So as part of the Boat Virginia Grant that we received, we received a 2-1 match to go ahead and grade Lot 4, if you can see that. Although the entire lot is about 26 acres, Lot 4 is, the actual graded part, will be less than that. But when you look over at 5A, C, and D, you have a lot of low-lying areas. So true of all of our Amherst County topography. So when you go to grade, you can either pay as you want to level that, pay for dirt to be brought in, or you can bring dirt in from another location in the Amalon Commerce Center. Lot 3 is a great spot for businesses, got a lot of high visibility, but it kind of sits on top of the hill. And that doesn't provide a very large spot to build a building and for parking and turning around if you had any semi-trucks coming in. It also, V Dock's probably going to demand an entrance that comes in kind of across from the existing road that goes towards Moore &amp; Giles Building there. So taking off the dirt makes sense. It's going to lower it, it's going to increase the pad. So the question before you all is, two options. When you all kept Lot 3, when you passed the rest on to the Economic Development Authority about eight years, nine years ago, the idea was that was being held back for emergency services building. Several years ago, you all went through a long process to decide where you're going to build there, where you're not going to build there, and the choice was not to build there at that time. I'm not aware of any other plans, but I have heard that folks have said, you know, why don't you just go ahead and market that lot for another business to come on? So we would like to be able to take some of this build, cut dirt off of Lot 3, move it to some of our low-relying areas when we are doing more grading in the Commerce Center. We can either do that two ways. You can either transfer the land to the EDA, and we will do it that way, and we will continue to market it. We market it now, but, you know, it would be fully in our, in our control that way. Also, with Lot 3, right now, county public works is coming over and doing roaming and taking care of the lot. If we have control over the EDA, then we will put it into our system, and our landscaping votes will take over that, and that will be one less thing that county has to do. So choice is transfer. So choice is transfer or give us permission essentially to be able to take the dirt off. That will be at no cost to the county, that would be something the EDA would fund.
Or any questions for Ms. Aaron?
No questions, but there's comments.
Okay.
Really?
Yes.
Yeah, so I had asked Ms. Rogers yesterday, and she confirmed and just also affirmed that this was a site of possible future emergency services site. As you mentioned, it was decided not to pursue it at that time, but long-term, I think, if you look in our CIP and the far out years, there's still an item there to consider that. So I think it would probably be short-sighted for us to transfer the property to the EDA. I think this would be an excellent location to put an emergency services facility in the future if we choose to do that. As far as allowing you to, you know, use the filled dirt from it and level it all, I don't have any issue with that at all. Given that it's seen multi-stabilized per regulations. So while I could support letting the dirt go, as long as, you know, we're not left with a mess, I would not support transferring it.
And I would support transferring it. I see that as a potential great site for a business. It is an industrial park. I think that if we were to be able to pay EMS facility, we can always buy another piece of property, we can look at different areas, it's feasible. If we can't, could not find one, we can always condemn a property if we had to. So we always have the option. That's a visible site, I think it would be great to be able to have a business there. I think it would be a productive site. I would be fine with transferring that over to the EDA and allowing them to market that and see if we can get a business there that could produce some tax base.
I would mention the county does own a lot across from the Amalon Commerce Center. I don't know particularly how large it is and would be able to accommodate an emergency services building. I don't know if Jeremy is still here, but I understand that it is, you know, I've looked at it on the GIS, and it is across the road on one of these premier corners on 130. So there is land that you all do own if you decided you might want to look at that option.
Can anybody provide any history on the discussion of the new EMS site, or like whether because of buildings and the shape of buildings, access, all of those?
When I first arrived here, six years ago, that was under discussion because the county owned that site, because it was right on 130, and because it had public visibility, that they could see their public services right there, that's easy to pull out, and was considered to be a good location for a fire station. And it's large enough to accommodate that. But at the time, what was motivating that was declining volunteer numbers that had since turned around, and that was no longer a priority. We had gone through several proposals, we were looking at about $4 million to build that, and because we had leftover bond money, we decided not to do that, and that money was used to actually build this extension on this building. So that exists as an idea, it exists as a far-out, refurbished-out project on the CIP that keeps getting pushed out. It's always at the five or six-year point. Whether it continues or whether it's moved to another location, the parcel across the street is about three acres, it's a triangular piece there that tucks into 130 and Amalon Road where it comes in, probably would not be conducive for a fire station, not enough acreage around it, because it'll be probably a large facility with multiple bays. So we would have to find some other location if we did not use Lot 3.
So, Hanson, I've heard you say that you market Lot 3.
So, yes, I was told, you know, if there was somebody who was very interested in that lot in particular, to bring it to you all and see what you would say about that as the owners of the lot. So that could always be in place. It is a premier site, like Supervisor Few had mentioned, that as people would drive back and forth, we have had business interest, especially in expanding business that might be considering coming that wanted a highly visible site. And had they progressed, if that had been the right one, that might have been something that I would bring to you all to say, you know, is that something you want to do with that lot? You know, we can leave it that way, if, you know, just whatever the board would think. I will say that the EDA has for several years realized what's Phase 2, when the Amalon Commerce Center does fill in, you know, where is the next industrial park that we can offer to build businesses? It's a long-term idea, takes about 10 years, it's a lot of money to go ahead and create it, but we are finding that in 2019, we had more prospects than we've had in previous seven years before that. Got real quiet during the pandemic in 2020, but in 2021, we are seeing a lot of activity, you know, a lot of questions coming to us, and those who are interested, and every single one of them, because they kind of sat still during 2020 for manufacturing, they are ready, they're kind of pent up demand to try to find a site, and usually, they're always going to want to have a construction-ready site so that they know they can get right to build.
Well, us providing the dirt all from Lot 3, don't make that site ready?
That will make that site larger, and at that point, DEQ will have a plan for. So the idea was that you take off a lot of that dirt, and the detention pond would be kind of the, where the land is kind of at the bottom triangles where they were talking about the detention pond. So it would make it a larger site, it would be more ready for construction. Because some of the, also some of the trees would be cleared as part of the grading.
Madam Chair, we tend to agree with Mr. Martin. And as long as it remains property of the county, if Ms. Hanson has a business that would be interested and always has the option to come in and discuss it with us and give us, you know, what the potential is for that site for a, an interested business, so, and I'm totally in agreement if they can take dirt from that site to help work the other site, I'm good with that, but I'm not in favor of our own interest right now, especially with that option to them if they were to come up with a climate advantage, that there would be no reason she couldn't come and discuss it, and we'll take the action at that time.
I agree. Is that in the form of a motion?
You can put it in the form of a motion if you would like.
Go ahead, Mr. Aaron.
I made a motion that the lot, excuse me, that belongs to the county, Amalon Industrial Park, remain as property of the county, but that the EDA can utilize dirt from that site to facilitate another site as needed, as long as the appropriate measures are taken to make sure that site that is removed from is stabilized once finished.
Motion on the floor by Mr. Aaron, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any of both? Motion carries. Any questions? Opposed improvements to Coolwell Convenience Center, welcome, Mr. Becker.
Madam Chair. Coolwell Convenience Center, so last board meeting, it was decided not to pursue the Madison Heights Convenience Center. That puts emphasis back on the Coolwell Convenience Center, which is at capacity. So I'm here this afternoon to answer any questions you have about potential infrastructure repairs to this site that are included in your board packet.
Ready to entertain questions?
Absolutely.
Or any question to Mr. Becker?
In the, I think in the process, as you provided, that did not include an access route?
That's correct. So Public Works would do the land clearing for it, that would save money, but we have not actually done any kind of study to determine how much that is, because all we have is a concept land from the engineer.
Maybe with two, two that funding to be for, on, this is all coming out of the bond.
Yes, sir.
Well, I support this, you know, we already got the facility, it's a large facility, it's got a substantial amount of acreage. Being near, in the district, I'm not in the River View area, but I am in Madison Heights, and I've heard from two former supervisors in District 5, that said that they would support an expansion of Coolwell, they did not see the reason to put that facility on River View Road, and they thought that this was a good use of those funds. It's not that far from River View or any other area in Madison Heights to get to Coolwell Road. I think also, one of the things that I thought was it saves us money and employment, we will not have to hire additional employees for a new facility, so it will save us in that aspect as well.
Correct.
So I'm in favor of this, it is, it is used extensively, and a lot, a lot of times you go there, it's full. One of the things you're considering doing is adding compactors, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
So you don't have to haul as often, or what's the premise about?
That's correct. So right now, we're running approximately six and a half days a week, sometimes on Sundays, which we promised the board we would when we were awarded the opportunity to haul the sites. However, bringing people in on Sundays jacks up overtime for Public Works and for the counties, we would prefer not to do that. Compactors would handle overflow for garbage, we'd also install compactors for recycle, take our recycling containers down from five to two, and then compacting the loads that we would haul less. A savings all around.
Any other questions or is there a motion?
I move that the board proceed with authorization the funding of infrastructure improvements to the Coolwell Convenience Center.
All right, motion on the floor by Mr. Few, all in favor say aye.
Just to clarify, with those improvements, will be the access?
Yes, sir.
Motion on the floor by Mr. Few, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any of both? Motion carries.
Hey, I do have a quick question while you're up here. I know we haven't brought it up yet, but could you give us a list sometime of the, I know Coolwell is the most widely used, what is the second most widely used facility in the county?
Peddler.
Peddler.
I can go over the numbers now if you'd like.
Sure.
You said most widely used?
Second. Second most widely used.
Oh, second, okay.
So, yes.
So, again, back last year when promises were made by Public Works, you asked for an update for the last six months, that would be July through December. We have hauled slightly less containers and more tonnage. Coolwell is still by far the king of the sites, all the sites combined don't equal what Coolwell does in a single month, year beyond. But as it ranks, Coolwell is the most busiest, followed by Peddler, and then Warp Barn, Dodge Store, and by far and last, 60 East.
Do you have, how do you rate this? Do you have tonnage, do you have trips? How do you?
Both.
So what is, from Peddler to the next most, what's the difference in?
Peddler, from July to December, had 594 tons hauled out of waste. The next highest was Boswood Farm at 411.
I thought you said Warp.
I did say that, that was a mistake, I meant Boswood Farm.
And then Warp?
And then Warp, and then Dodge Store, and then 60 East. And I can provide a TV email if the board would like that.
Yeah, well, I was thinking that, you know, having sites closed two days a week is beneficial in a lot of aspects, to keep costs.
Peddler is Dodge.
No, Peddler is, Dodge was on 60 West, Dodge was on 60 West, right there.
Where's the couple with that?
Peddler is, my folks are off around 130 and one up. Between England and O'Neil.
Gotcha.
And they're pedal mills. And it's not, they're pedal farm.
They're both, they're both.
They're both on each side of 635. Well, I was just, there's been suggestions, well, you know, maybe you should keep the top two open seven days a week. You know, there's a plethora of things you could do, that was just what I was getting at, maybe if we, if we look at this and see what we can do, but I do realize that there is, I think they've been saying about keeping them closed two days a week.
Yes, sir, plus the advent of the two new waste haulers for the county. And determining for the last six months, they brought in 136 tons of waste from the county, meaning those 136 tons that are convenience centers are not incurring. That takes the pressure off the sites.
But if you have compactors, you can.
That provides more convenience for our citizens, meaning we're not closing cans or sites early, and it cuts down the number of hauls, saving more money.
Right, so if you left it open, you have room for more tonnage to come in on the stage, right?
You're just distributing the same tonnage over two more days and incurring more cost in doing so.
So if you've got a can, and you can put X amount in.
What kind of can?
A trash can.
Well, we have open tops, we have compactors, and that.
Okay, an open top can.
Yes, sir.
Okay. And you can put certain amounts, if you put a compactor in, you can compact it to get more tonnage running.
Yes, sir.
And use it all. So are you telling me that in the five days that it's open, there's no more room in those compactors?
I've not suggested that at all, no, sir.
What you're saying is, you're getting, people know that it's only open five days a week, or, yeah, five days a week. So if you open up seven days a week, you're considering that you're still going to get the same tonnage, because people are still going to bring their trash there, right? Is that what you said?
Yeah, so we're talking two mutually exclusive issues. When we had to close sites early, that was partially due to county waste hauling, and it doesn't, it's not behooved into county waste, it could be any waste hauler that would not haul past 10:00 a.m. on a Saturday. Well, people are still coming Saturday afternoons and Sundays, and the sites would close prematurely. Often also, they would put in open-top containers, meaning we fill the open tops first, and then they'd be overflowing, and then the compactors would overflow, which would be a disaster. Now, with Public Works in charge of this, we're filling compactors first and then going to solid waste, open tops when we can. Now, in terms of, if a site gets 200 tons a month, whether it's five days a week or seven days a week, they're still going to get the same 200 tons, to answer your question, Mr. Martin. But hiring more site attendants, again, in lieu of also the projected wage increases this year, next year, and the year after for the state of Virginia, and the potential of $15 an hour for a federal minimum wage, can be as much as $93,000 just for these five sites. If you wanted to add all sites, 12 hours a day, seven days a week. The numbers don't preclude that this is an option, at this time, I'd like to bring it back in six months to look at it again. It may change.
Ready for the questions for Mr. Becker?
So, we're having a discussion right now on whether or not we're going to, I hope the sites up. I think that would be more of a discussion for the budget.
Yeah, no, I wasn't glad to have that discussion, it wasn't on the agenda, I was just merely asking some questions, I just wanted to know from a, just wanted to know.
That would in fact be appropriate for the budget workshop this afternoon, where we talk about manpower, that's an additional manpower expense, it's not in the listing, and the question is whether you all would want to add it to the listing of additional manpower. So this afternoon is probably the best time to take it up.
Thank you, Ms. Rogers. Thank you, Ms. Hanson.
Thank you, board members.
Moving on to the county magistrate report.
Yes, ma'am, just one item, I need the board's confirmation on this. Our tradition here in the county has been to follow the holiday schedule of the state. This year, the governor has added a holiday, and he added voting day, and then we changed a holiday, and that is Lee Jackson Day was ended and replaced with Juneteenth. So there's a net gain of one additional holiday for government workers in the state. I'm proposing to just add that to the county calendar with all of our other official holidays, and seeking the board's approval for that, because I think this is, this is a policy kind of issue that I should, I should bring to you and not just do on my own.
Or any questions for Mr. Rogers? Any comments? What's your pleasure?
Madam Chair, I move that the board accepts the changes to H.R. Regulation 6.1, 6.11 holidays.
The motion on the floor by Mr. Aaron, all in favor say aye. Any of both? Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Aaron.
Thanks, Madam.
County attorney, welcome.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, how are you?
Well, how are you?
Good. Only one thing I wanted to mention, I am going to get with Ms. Brown to make sure that we have the lease and insurance paperwork straight done for our recent change, otherwise, good to see y'all.
Good to see you, thank you. The H.R. Commissary Report. Ms. Brown, you have the first one. VML Waco Negotiation.
Madam Chair, that's just in there for information, unless anybody has any questions about that.
Anybody have any questions? All right, agricultural complex.
I'll say a few words, and then Mr. Aaron's can.
I'll say a few words and then Mr. Ers can jump in with what he knows. The feedback that I have gotten from citizens after reading the story in the paper has been all positive, the exception of a single individual from my perspective. We're scheduled... In the process of scheduling a meeting with two of the Nelson County Board Supervisors members, a lot of Mr. Ers, myself, staff from Nelson and Amherst will be there. I have talked to one of the Nelson County Board members that's on this small group yesterday. They're very enthusiastic. They've included it in their capital improvement plan and it is included in their top four priorities for the county. I mean, I remain... You know, we're still in the information gathering part of this, but I just think that a joint venture with our neighbors and what this could do for our county is, I mean, this could be one of the biggest things that we give back to this county that we've seen yet. Mr. Ers, anything you want to add?
Thank you, Ms. Tucker. I concur. You know, it's very preliminary as to, you know, who, what, when, where and if it's going to work out, but there's definitely the interest there from Assistant County Nelson. And I think that it's great that two of the counties can work toward a common goal such as this and, you know, especially if we can have a pretty state-of-the-art vocational school located there on that premises that would provide many opportunities to our students here in our county, Nelson, and hopefully the full site will be put in it and there will be seats available to kids from other jurisdictions as well. So what I've... Who I've talked to and what I've heard has been positive, but again, it's very important.
Well, thank you both for bearing that. Everybody. Next, Department of Labor reports. Mr. Brown, are you going to take this one?
Yeah. This past... Early October, we received an unsolicited P.P.E.A. proposal from Southern Air for school and county H.V.A.C. maintenance services. The vast majority of the equipment to be maintained is in the schools. The schools gave significant consideration to this. I know their school board talked about it. They decided that they wished for us to accept the proposal and then proceed with advertising for competitive proposals, which is the process for that. We did so and as a couple of weeks or so ago, the due date passed and we had no competing proposals. The schools again reconsidered this with us, in fact, and we wish to proceed with negotiation with Southern Air. The regulations state that I'm to establish an evaluation group, which has been done. And Bill of School Board member, the Assistant School Superintendent, their maintenance director, have our Public Works Director and Maintenance Manager in this group. We have had one preliminary meeting and that is my report, except then I would invite any board member if you feel like that would be appropriate and you'd like to participate, you can be on that evaluation group as well. You got any questions or...
Or any questions? Anybody want to participate?
Okay, thanks.
That's good. Did you raise your hand, Mr. Few?
I don't think so. I always say that's... I'm a hard burden.
All right. At this time, we will open the floor back up for citizen comments. Is there anybody here wishing to speak? Same here, no one to close, citizen comments. Matters from the members of the board, Ms. Tucker?
I don't have anything, Madam Chair.
Mr. Ers?
No.
Mr. Barton? Mr. Few?
Well, I... Mr. Rogers, Mr. Brian, could you possibly come to us next week with maybe, not next week, next meeting, some form of an update on the drive, where we're at, where it's going, I'm starting to get involved in here.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, George. Thank you.
I have nothing.
I have nothing. I believe that the Amherst County Board Supervisors convene in closed session pursuant to section 2.2-3711A5 for the purpose of discussion concerning a prospective business or industry where no previous announcement has been made of the business or industry's interest in locating its facilities in the county specifically related to processes or determining suitability and potential locations for unannounced businesses. Chair, a motion on the floor by Ms. Tucker. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I move that the Amherst County Board of Supervisors come out of closed session.
From the motion on four, Robin Missis and Tucker, all in favor, say aye. Any vote? Motion adjourned.
Madam Chair, I move that the Amherst County Board of Supervisors certified by recorded vote that invests each board member's dollars only in public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and identified in the motion authorizing the closed session or her discussed or considered as closed session.